Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, July 27, 2021. A meeting announcement. Council recess will begin tomorrow, Wednesday, July 28, end to end, Thursday, August 19. Council will continue to meet virtually until September 1st, when we return. 2021. All meetings will air on the city channels and live streamed on YouTube in the city website. Will the clerk please call, take the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Kraus. Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
This is Cal Smith, President.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Join from our remote locations, please rise, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a moment, assign. And I know that we had a lost a firefighter and the firefighters lost a family member this weekend, so I'd like to keep him and his family in our prayers, them and their families in our prayers. And for any other possible city employees that may have passed away that we're unaware of, we want to thank our employees. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our next order of business is proclamations. We have one from Councilman O'Connor.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill Number 1731. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Paul Martino for distinguished career in broadcast journalism, commends him for raising the bar on accountability, transparency, and ethical reporting, and congratulates Paul Martino for leaving a legacy of honor and professionalism. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Thursday, August 12, 2021, to be Paul Martino Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Is Councilman O'Connor on? And if he had anything to say, and I just want to thank Paul Martino, I think we all, I was also going to present a proclamation and before, I knew it, he said there were about three other members, so it was nice to know that he was so appreciated by City Council. And then I have one for the Mike Awards to be read into the record.
Council President Cal Smith presents Bill Number 1732. Now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby congratulate the 2021 recipients of the Mike Awards and be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Sunday, August 8, 2021, to be Mike Awards Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Do we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamations approved. Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberations which are or may be before City Council. Profanity and threats will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker? Please, Madam Clerk.
The first speaker is April Maddie, followed by Lee Grace Jones.
Thank you. Is April with us? I don't see her. Do you see her on here?
No, I don't see her.
How about Grace Jones? Yes, Grace is there.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Lee Grace Jones. I'm a retired state employee who has property next to 8373 Vi Det Street. This property, 8373 Vi Det Street, has been abandoned for at least three or four years. It is structurally unsafe, has severe rodents, and when there are high winds, the debris flies around the different properties. Just recently, vagrants were sitting on the porch, smoking and drinking. We were fortunate that one of our male neighbors heard them because the grass and the tree bushes were hiding the vagrants. Our male neighbor made them leave 8373 Vi Det before a fire could ensue. This is very unsafe. All of our neighbors pitched in and cut down those tree bushes and the grass so that we could see who, you know, see the front of the porch. 8373 Vi Det Street has been in the court system for a couple of years. It has also, it also has a blue demolition or condemnation notice on it, and that's been on it for a couple of years. I am requesting, urging, asking, pleading with the City Council to make funds available to have 8373 Vi Det demolished. It has not, it's not only unsafe to me, but also to my neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Brian Keyes.
Do we, do you see Brian Keyes?
Yeah, he's on there, but I don't.
I don't see him. Hold on.
Okay, I'll move on. The next speaker is Nancy Noska.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Oh, that's Brian. That's Brian.
I apologize. I usually let my son do the technical expertise here. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I'm going to be very brief. The purpose of me joining, first of all, my name is Pastor Brian Keyes. I'm the executive pastor of Legacy International Worship Center, which is located at 2131 Wilson Avenue on the corner of Wilson and Drum Street. The purpose of me being here is to stop the potential sale of seven lots on Wilson Avenue to Perry Hilltop Farms. Those lots are slated for our affordable housing project, which will be on Wilson Avenue, Holyoke and Drum Street. And so just to give you a little bit of background, since January 2019, Legacy has been in contact and directly working with Mayor Bill Perdido and the Office of the Mayor on a pilot program, which is an initiative for the City of Pittsburgh to work directly with churches. Mayor Perdido has walked Wilson Avenue, Holyoke and Drum Street with our senior pastor, Pastor Day, and communicated that our vision for building affordable houses supports his initiative as well. The mayor has put all of his support into this housing, the Affordable Housing Project, of which the seven lots are part of a larger affordable housing project. We've communicated this also to our state Senator Fontana. We've talked to State Representative Jake Wheatley. We've communicated it to Councilman Daniel Lavelle and just recently communicated it with Councilman Bobby Wilson. We have partnered with Perry Hilltop Fineview Citizens Council, the URA, and other private funders that will help and support this along with our personal resources that we are putting in to fund this project. The Affordable Housing Project is going to be done in two phases. The first one is going to be 34 units, of which these seven are part of. And the second phase will be a community center with technology and space for all community members and partners to share, which coincides with our long-term strategy to make the affordable housing and the new community center the epicenter for the community. We do plan on, at the end of August, meeting with Democratic nominee for mayor, Ed Gany, to ensure that there's transparency and continuity in this pilot program of which Mayor Bill Perdido supports. We would be happy to present the schematics of the Affordable Housing Plan for both phases one and two at the appropriate time. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Nancy Noska, followed by Brittany Riley.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Noska. I'm the Community Real Estate Director for Fineview Citizens Council and Perry Hilltop Citizens Council. I've been with them since October. We have four parcels that are in the property reserve on Wilson, so we have been working through PCRG and Legacy trying to secure these sites. So I mimic what Pastor Brian said, and we support the legislation being postponed, delayed, and not approved. The other concerning issue is that when we looked up the dockets, the conservatorship for these was originally filed in 2018. I was not aware of that, and I just, you know, the communication channels between the efforts of Legacy Perry Hilltop and this happening, I don't know where the, where the communication broke down. So if there's any improvement in terms of the Finance Department, our redevelopment authority, and everybody communicating, that would be great. So we do have the Choice Neighborhood Initiative, and we are looking at affordable housing on that street. And Perry Hilltop Farms never did any presentation to us or connected with the community prior to filing those conservatorships. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Brittany Riley.
Brittany?
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes. Please state your name and neighborhood, please, for the record.
Sure. I'm Brittany Riley. My neighborhood is Lawrenceville, Pittsburgh, 15201. I'm the nominator of the former Mellon Bank in East Liberty for historic landmark designation and Chair of the Pittsburgh Modern Committee of Preservation Pittsburgh. We've worked together to research Mellon Bank's rich architectural legacy and the merit of their East Liberty branch completed in 1970, both then and now. How its irreplaceable site-specific design represents streamlined modern architecture in Pittsburgh during a complex time of transformation. No matter if you find it ugly or attractive, this is not a beauty contest or a contest at all. A local historic designation is not a trophy, as Mr. Marasco on behalf of Citizens Bank has described it. Instead, it should be the result of a thorough, fair, and just review of any maturing structure or site that any community member finds value in. It need not be an iconic tower. Please open your eyes with us to what tells the stories, the precious stories of Pittsburgh, and the power that even vernacular and recently historic architecture has to tell those stories. This afternoon, I'll need to update my colleagues and our network of Pittsburgh community members of many ages, demographics, and professional experience, that even though the Historic Review Commission found great integrity and merit in this structure and how it represents the region's modernism, it can be torn down. That even though the Planning Commission endorsed the structure's unique form and how it provides a sense of distinct place at a primary intersection, it can be torn down. That even though several dozens of you express the value you see in the structure's architecture and sighting and the memories you have of it, it can be torn down. Its worth was understood, right? If it was, that doesn't ultimately matter or have any standing now because of Pittsburgh, because a Rhode Island-based bank tenant in a Phoenix-based real estate portfolio has the sole rights to decide what happens at this community corner under the purview of a single councilman. The generalized statement that all of East Liberty is against its designation continues to deny the existence of the East Liberty Valley Historical Society. They are in support of the nomination and an important organization in the neighborhood. The Pittsburgh Modern Committee is here to work together with council and the city to educate on, explore, and protect the modern 20th century architecture in our region so that we have examples to share with future iterations of Pittsburgh, and we will not stop that work. I want to personally thank Councilwoman Gross for her understanding of this vision and several other council members who have taken their time to have productive conversations with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Naomi Mullen.
Naomi on here?
Hello.
Yes.
Naomi Mullen, on air.
Can you please?
Okay. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Last night, 16 Bon Air community members sent their speeches to the Board of Education in opposition to our long-closed school becoming an apartment building. Momentum is growing because we have been wronged by not having a public meeting to discuss the plans of the developer before the board made a decision. Community support was never achieved. At the town hall meeting that Councilman Coghill organized was the mayor of Mount Oliver, who kindly attended and advised against an apartment building in Bon Air. Mayor Bernadette Me has been dealing with the horrific problem that Mount Oliver School became. If one school in the 15210 area ended up with human waste in the hallways, why would another in the same South Dakota not have a similar fate? We, the property owners of Bon Air, have done a great job of keeping a low crime and stable environment. We have invested in our properties and deserve the credit and respect of our public servants. This article explains what Bon Air started as and should remain. Here's how 82 Pittsburgh neighborhoods got their names. PennLive.com. Bon Air, the duo of developers who bought this land in 1898, established the Bon Air Land Company. They branded the area as the prettiest, cleanest, healthiest place about Pittsburgh, two miles from the courthouse, building restrictions on all lots. If the members of Pittsburgh City Council do their part in encouraging the school board and purchase the school for a dollar, they can be part of the creation of a green space that will benefit all ages and stages of people. Be part of the solution in our city environment. More green, less heat, and floodwater run off headed to the Route 51 corridor. More peaceful gardens and space to commune with our neighbors is the solution. Tear down problem buildings, not low-crime, stable neighborhoods. Have an enjoyable summer break, members of council. Thank you. Shady trees, not shady deals.
Thank you. Have a good day. Next speaker, please.
That was the end of the speakers.
Thank you so much. Having exhausted our list of registered speakers, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is presentation of papers. Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers, Madam President. Good morning.
Good morning, Councilman. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1729, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 816, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2016 Capital Budget and Approving the 2016 Through 2021 Capital Budget Improvement, Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Signage at $15,000 in Transferring Those Funds to the URA for Sidewalk Repairs."
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety. Do we have? Can someone hit? Councilman?
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman Kraus for Councilman O'Connor. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1730, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 291 of 2021, entitled, "Providing for the Sale of Certain Property Acquired by the City at Tax-Sell Items A through H." 1642 Worthington, Zero Gopher, Zero Killborne, 964 Mountain, Zero Industry, 1031 Woods Run, 3251 Central, as to add item H, 1703, Termin.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to weigh the rules of council and discuss that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Any discussion, Councilman?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everyone know that this is a previous bill that included, as you can see, a lot of different addresses for the sale, for the property sales. And I struck 1703. I tabled that previously so that the community could have input on the sale with the purchaser. And so that had happened, that's happened, and the community's in favor of the sale. So I'm requesting that we can weigh the rules of council, and then I'll also make a motion to ask that it appears on our final vote.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
And the bill will appear on, at the end of today's meeting. Thank you, Councilman. And myself, hearings, I have no papers. We'll now move on to unfinished businesses. Are there any unfinished business before council? Saying none, the next order of business is Reports of Committee for Final Action. Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 1722, Reporter Committee on Finance and Law for July 21, 2021, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 1678, Resolution Amending Resolution 865, which authorized the mayor and director of finance on behalf of the city to enter into an amendment to parking agreements to amend existing designated meter revenue and corporation agreements between the city and the Pittsburgh Public Parking Authority for the purpose of dedicating revenue generated by increased parking meter rates to the city and to further document updates to the Parking Court Corporation Agreement, the Mellon Square Garage Lease, and the Monaghahela Wharf Lease, to authorize a second amendment to parking agreements, to further amend the corporation agreement and the Monaghahela Wharf Lease between the city and the Pittsburgh Public Parking Authority, and to amend certain other terms of the amendment to parking agreements. Bill Number 1691, Resolution Authorizing the Issueant of a Warrant in Favor of Duquesne Light Company in the Amount of $7,235.36 in Settlement of a Claim for Damage to Wooden Light Pole at the Intersection of Queenston and Fairland Streets by a City Environmental Services Vehicle on February 27, 2020. Bill Number 1692, Resolution Providing for the Sale of Certain Properties Consistent of Vacant Lots Acquired by the City at Tax-Sell 2128, 2130, 2134, 2136, 222210, 2218, Wilson Avenue, and Thereafter Authorizing the Execution of a Quick Claim deed conveying all the city's right, title, and interest in and to said properties to Blight to Light Incorporated. Bill Number 1694, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 647 of 2020, entitled, "Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2021 Capital Budget and the 2021 CDBG Program and the 2021 Through 2026 Capital Improvement Program by Adding $7,79,817.50 to Reflect the Allocation of Emergency Rental Assistant to Funds from the Treasury Department and Authorizing a Subsequent Agreement or Agreements." Bill Number 1695, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance to Enter into a License Agreement with Veterans' Place of Washington Boulevard to Allow the Performance of Pre-Development Survey Work on Designated City Property in Order to Facilitate the Construction of a Mixed-Use Building, Including Housing Units and Recreational Facilities for Homeless Veterans. Bill Number 1696, Resolution Amending Resolution Number 340, Vacating a Portion of Caldwell Street and Portions of Our Way in the Third Ward, Sixth Council District of the City by Extending the Expiration Date of the Payment from the Property Owners to the Treasury of the City from 730 days to 910 days from the Effective Date of the Resolution, August 1 of 2019. Bill Number 1714, Ordinance Amending and Supplement in the City of Pittsburgh Code, Title I, Article 7, by Amending Chapter 161 with Respect to Procurement Procedures for Small Non-Professional Services Agreement utilized by the Department of Parks and Recreation and the Department of Public Safety, Office of Special Events for Recreational and Instructional Purposes. Bill Number 1715, Resolution Authorizing Pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Accept a Donation from First T of Pittsburgh in the Amount of $100,000 for Site Work at the New Clubhouse located in the Bob O'Connor Golf Course at Shinley Park. Bill Number 1721, in Ordinance Providing for Special Conditions for the Operation and Use of Paid Sick Leave under the Paid Sick Leave Days Act during and due to the crisis presented by COVID-19 through inclusion in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances of Chapter 626B, Temporary COVID-19 Paid Sick Leave.
You've heard the beginning of the title of the bills. Was there any discussion on the bills?
Yeah, Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Lavelle.
Just per my email to members yesterday and per the two callers who called in to public comment today, I just want to remind members, it's Bill 1692 that I'm respectfully asking you to vote no against.
1692. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Wilson.
Yes, I had amendments that were, I'm sorry, an amendment that was sent around for Bill 1721, and I want to make a motion to accept all amendments.
A second?
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Councilman, forgive me, 1721.
1721 is the COVID's paid sick leave. There were further amendments that were mostly technical in nature from the Law Department. So we just weren't working close with them over the, over the week so that they can strengthen the bill as much as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for working on this, Councilman. And we already voted, oh, in favor. Okay, now, Owen, any further discussion? Oh, in favor, the passage of the bills. The bills are all ready for final action. Those in favor, passage, or if the name is called, those opposed will vote no. And please keep in mind, we were asked to vote no on Bill 1692 by Councilman Lavelle. Please call them.
Reverend Burgess.
No on Bill 1692. Aye on the remaining bills.
Mr. Coghill.
No on Bill 1692 and no on Bill 1721. Aye on all others.
You voted no on 1721 as well?
That's right.
Ms. Gross.
No on Bill 1692 and aye on all other bills. Thank you.
Mr. Kraus.
No on 1692. Aye on all remaining bills, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lavelle.
No on Bill 1692. Aye on all other bills. Thank you all.
Mr. O'Connor. Ms. Strasburger.
No on Bill 1692. Aye on all other bills.
Mr. Wilson.
No on 1692 and aye on all other bills. Thanks, everyone.
This is Cal Smith, President.
I, no on Bill 1692 and aye on all other bills.
On Bill 1692, aye, nose eight, zero ayes. On Bill 1721, aye, seven, nose one. All other bills, ayes eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed except for Bill 1692. So, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, council members. And next committee is Councilman Coria Connor, Councilman Kraus for Councilman Corio Connor, Councilman Kraus, for Councilman O'Connor, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I think I don't see papers for Councilman O'Connor. Am I missing something? Forgive me. Oh, there you go. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman O'Connor presents Bill number seventeen twenty-three, Report of the Committee on Public Safety Services for July twenty-first with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number sixteen ninety-seven, Resolution amending Resolution number eight forty-eight, authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended professional services agreement with Saint Mort's Security Services for security guard services in order to increase compensation in accordance with applicable collective bargaining wage rate. Compensation under said amended agreement shall be in an amount not to exceed three million three hundred and fourteen thousand dollars with annual not to exceed amount as set forth below for each respective budget year subject to the availability of funds and annual council appropriations and rates in compliance and subject to any applicable requirements, including but not limited to collective bargaining commitments and the City of Pittsburgh service worker prevailing wage ordinance. Bill number sixteen ninety-eight, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Center for Police Research and Policy House within the University of Cincinnati to engage in a process and outcome evaluation of training and technical assistance as part of the academic training to inform police responses initiative. Bill number sixteen ninety-nine, Resolution authorizing the issuing of a warrant in favor of Green Gear's Pedicabs in an amount not to exceed eight thousand five hundred dollars for litter and waste control services provided for the city Independence Day event on July fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Bill number seventeen sixteen, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to enter on behalf of the city into an agreement with Allegheny County to receive funding from hazardous material incident response in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President.
Councilman Gross.
So these were just, um, I think I've got, lost my place in the agenda. Those were just all the bills under public safety?
Yes.
I was reading ahead, so I wasn't sure which ones I was.
This way, it is.
Okay, thank you. That's all I needed.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Oh, the bills are now ready for final action. Oh, in favor of the passage, but I remember the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Please call the vote.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Ms. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strassberger. Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
I.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. That moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill number seventeen twenty-four, Report of the Committee on Public Works for July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number sixteen eighty-seven, Resolution authorizing the mayor and directors of the Department of Public Works and of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Peoples Natural Gas Company to grant a permanent easement and temporary easement to install and maintain natural gas pipelines and necessary accessories within the Diamond Street parking lot located between Fifth Avenue and Diamond Street in the Central Business District. Bill number seventeen oh seven, Resolution granting a vacation of an unopened portion of Ingleside Avenue laid out in the Inglewood Place Plan of Lots, as recorded in P V, P B V, thirty-one page two in the tenth ward, ninth council district.
Thank you. You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Oh, in favor of the passage, we'll vote I when the name is called, those opposed will vote no.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strassberger. Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
I.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Bruce Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill number seventeen twenty-five, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number sixteen ninety, Resolution amending Resolution two sixty-three, which authorized the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a professional services agreement with Ceridian Human Capital Management, Inc. for a citywide time and attendance system by increasing the not to exceed amount by eighty-four thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars for additional reporting support and by updating the J D E account stream.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bill's not ready for final. Is there somebody? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Oh, in favor of the passage, but I remember the name is called, those opposed will vote no. Please call the vote.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Ms. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strassberger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
I.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Councilwoman Bobby Wilson, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill number seventeen twenty-six, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one with a negative recommendation. Bill number sixteen twelve, Resolution providing for the designation as a historic structure under Title eleven of the Code of Ordinances that certain structure known as the East Liberty Mellon Bank located at sixty-one twelve Penn Avenue in East Liberty in the eighth ward. The owner's agent is opposed to the nomination. Bill number seventeen twenty-seven, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for July twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number fourteen forty-eight, Resolution approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoned Article Two for University of Pittsburgh named Institutional Master Plan dated April twenty-twenty-one on property zone E M I Educational Medical Institution District, fourth and fifth wards, council districts number three, six, and eight. Bill number fifteen thirty, Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title Nine Zoned Article One, section nine oh two oh three zoning map by changing from parks to D N D I Neighborhood Industrial, a portion of one parcel in the Allegheny County Block and Lot System twentieth ward. Bill number seventeen hundred, Resolution further amending Resolution number eight fifty-five of twenty-eleven, entitled Resolution adopting and approving the twenty-twelve capital budget and the twenty-twelve C D B G program and approving the twenty-twelve through twenty-seventeen capital improvement program by reducing Wesley A M E charities by two thousand dollars and increasing demolition of condemned buildings by two thousand dollars. Bill number seventeen oh one, Resolution further amending Resolution number seven seventy-two, adopting and approving the twenty-thirteen capital budget and the twenty-thirteen C D B G program and approving the twenty-thirteen through twenty-eighteen capital improvement program by reducing various C D B G line items by seven thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents and increase in demolition of condemned buildings by seven thousand thirty-two dollars and twenty-one cents. Bill number seventeen oh two, Resolution further amending Resolution number seven ninety-six, entitled Resolution adopting and approving the twenty-fourteen capital budget and the twenty-fourteen C D B G program and approving the twenty-fourteen through twenty-nineteen capital improvement program by reducing various C D B G line items by twenty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents and increasing demolition of condemned buildings by twenty thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and ninety cents. Bill number seventeen seventeen, Resolution further amending Resolution number seven ninety-six, adopting and approving the twenty-fourteen capital budget and the twenty-fourteen C D B G program and approving the twenty-fourteen through twenty-nineteen capital improvement program by reducing West Ohio Street Bridge by one thousand one dollar and nineteen cent and increasing demolition of condemned buildings by one thousand one dollar and nineteen cents.
Thank you. And you've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President?
Yes.
So for Bill sixteen twelve, that it has a negative recommendation. If I want to oppose the negative recommendation, do I vote no on that bill?
You would vote yes. You were voting against the negative. So I was going to remind her that the vote for that Bill sixteen twelve, a yes is a vote for the negative. A no is a vote for against the negative, so.
So I would vote no, since I voted no last week. Okay, and so. I vote no this week on that bill, but all members are voting I to support to not to allow the demolition of the Mellon Bank building.
Yes, so I is in support of the negative.
And Madam President may also make some comment on that.
Yes, Councilwoman, yes.
So as I said last week, this fifty-one-year-old building is a remarkable, you know, just not a huge facade in East Liberty, but still a remarkably and unusual one. I've said it before and I'll say it again, modernist architecture is not my favorite type of architecture. And I tend to favor things built kind of in the nineteen-tens and the nineteen-twenty's and those are about, you know, fifty years or so before I was born. But as we move forward in time, and most of us are, you know, not so young anymore on councils, and at least some of us are just downright old, we should acknowledge what is old to us is, you know, it's relative. And so we have new generations who are our constituents and who are full-fledged adults who have a different perspective on what is old and what is landmarks. Right? And this really is about creating, you know, establishing a landmark. I know, I didn't say icon, I didn't say most famous architect on the planet. I didn't say, you know, the, you know, most beautiful building on the planet Earth, but literally just a place that allows you to know where you are. A landmark. So you know that you are on, you know, you're in East Liberty when you see that building because it's always been there when you were there. Some people will feel against how we should allow change and we shouldn't oppose change. Well, I think we have seen quite a bit of change in the last eight years in the City of Pittsburgh, right? There's been massive amounts of development, there's been massive amounts of demolition. We know there's been massive amounts of displacement and gentrification. This building does have, I see at least some community support in the review. And we certainly heard community support in public comments. I see in the record that there was letters of support from the East Liberty Valley Historical Society, the East Liberty Chamber of Commerce, some developers, some scholars, some community people, et cetera. Twenty-five letters of support from various community members, including residents of East Liberty, at the Planning Commission testimony. And then fifty-five voluntarily submitted public comments or something like that in the written record from the Historic Review Commission, Planning Commission. When we replace bit by bit, corner by corner, facade by facade, the places that are unique to our city and allow them to be replaced by the cookie cutter, you know, generic, homogeneous, some people call it vanilla even, type of development that is just repeated over and over and over and over and over and over. With every bank building looking the same, you don't know if you're on a corner in Austin or Orlando or, you know, or New Jersey or East Liberty. I think we lose, we lose that sense of self and identity. These will be contentious at times, right? What is somebody's landmark is not everybody's landmark. But I think this is one of those examples where we're thinking about, you know, a different aesthetic that we value. And our constituents, and especially younger constituents, are telling us that these are the kinds of places they value and we should respect that. And so I will be voting no to oppose the demolition of the bank building, I'll say it that way. And I will also point out something I think that is resonates with the vote that Councilman Lavelle asked us to turn down today in sixteen ninety-two because he was concerned about the, I think, the owners of the properties there being one of those kinds of LLCs that we really can't see the ownership structure of. And I, when our title of our bill even says that the owner's agents is opposed, that owner is very, very, it's, I don't even know how to pronounce this, V E R E I T, LLC. A very, very large real estate operating company based in Phoenix, Arizona. Their large real estate portfolio across the country is all tenant-based. I think largely commercial project, products. And so Citizens Bank is just the tenant here. So what we see is the tenant of a future building is in opposition. So it's really not even the owner. So I think that's an interesting little wrinkle here that I just caught by reading into the fine print of the documentation from the Planning Commission. Again, so we're allowing, we're deferring to the wishes of a large profiteering, profiteering research, real estate operating company based out of Phoenix and their convenience and profit. And so I will be voting no today to reject the negative recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. Oh, in favor of the passage, but I remember the name is called, those opposed, vote no. Keep in mind, for the Mellon Bank building, voting in the affirmative is to demo, correct, Madam Clerk?
Right, we'll be voting yes for the negative.
Right, and that's Bill sixteen twelve. Okay.
She'll take Bill sixteen twelve separately. We'll just take that one first and then take the others.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Abstain on sixteen twelve, I on all others.
Ms. Gross, no. Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Ms. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strassberger. Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
I.
On Bill sixteen twelve, I six knows one, one extension.
The bills haven't received legal, no, wait, this bill now.
We were taking Bill, we were taking Bill sixteen twelve.
Okay, was that Bill sixteen twelve?
Yes, that was sixteen twelve. Now do roll call for the others.
Okay.
Reverend Burgess.
Hi.
Mr. Coghill.
Hi.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
Hi.
Mr. Lavelle.
Hi.
Ms. Strassberger. Mr. Wilson.
Hi.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
I.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you. The bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to, is this Councilwoman? And that moves us on to, is this Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Gross presents bill number seventeen twenty-eight. Reported the committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number sixteen eighty-eight, resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan. For proposed land development located at the intersection of East Jefferson Street and Lane Way. At the parcels number twenty-three F seventy-eight, twenty-three F seventy-four, and twenty-three F seventy-three. Bill number sixteen eighty-nine, resolution amending resolution three ninety-five of twenty eighteen. To allow execution of a deed by in between the U R A and the city for the sale of lot twelve P. Lot one fifty-four in the sixteenth ward, council district number three.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills, is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills now ready for final action on favor of the passage of the name is called. Those opposed will vote no, with the clerk, please call the law.
Reverend Burgess.
I.
Mr. Coghill.
I.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
I.
Mr. Lavelle.
I.
Ms. Strassberger.
Hi.
Mr. Wilson. Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
I.
Eyes eight, no zero.
Thank you, the bills have received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to motions and resolutions. And I have meeting announcements this afternoon at one thirty P M, council will hold a cable cast post agenda discussion. With publicly funded charter schools to discuss their current and.
Madam President, one second. Councilman Wilson had that bill seventeen thirty that he needed to pass on the motions and resolutions before you go forward.
Okay, so let me finish reading this announcement, then we'll get the to Councilman Wilson's bill. So this afternoon at one thirty P M, council will hold a cable cast post agenda discussion with the publicly funded. Charter schools to discuss their current and future plans to increase academic achievement. And they'll be cheered by Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess, and that's called for by Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Burgess. And tomorrow, Wednesday, July twenty-eighth at one thirty P M, council will hold another cable cast post agenda discussion. With the Board of Education and the Superintendent on the current and future plans and programs to increase academic achievement. Both posted agendas are relative to bill twenty twenty-one eleven thirty-five. A resolution declaring a state of educational emergency in the city of Pittsburgh. And that that was sponsored by Councilman Lavelle and Councilman Burgess. Council's recess will begin tomorrow, July twenty-eighth, at the end and end on Thursday, August nineteenth. The first council meeting after recess will be Friday, August twentieth at ten A M. Also, council will be holding a community, holding community meetings regarding the American Rescue Plan as follows. Monday, August second at six P M. At the Pittsburgh Federation of Teachers, Wednesday, August eleventh at six P M at the Kingsley Center. Locations will be advertised on the Pittsburgh City Channel and posted to the close social media website. And I'll discuss that a little bit more towards the end, but Councilman Wilson. I know you have the bill you want to. This Councilman Wilson on. I'm sorry. Yeah.
Madam Clerk, are you able to read the bill or do you mean make a motion?
Read the bill again. Bill seventeen thirty, resolution amending resolution number two ninety-one. Entitled, providing for the sale of certain property acquired by the city of tax sales. Items eight through H sixteen forty-two Worthington, zero gopher, zero kill one nine sixty-four mountain. Zero industry, ten thirty-one Woods Run, thirty-two fifty-one Central, as to add items eight seventeen oh three termin.
You've heard the reading of the title of the bill, is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills now ready for final. Action on favor of the passage of the name is called, those opposed will vote no, with the clerk, please call the law.
Reverend Burgess.
I.
Mr. Coghill.
I.
Ms. Gross.
Hi.
Mr. Kraus.
I.
Mr. Lavelle.
I.
Ms. Strassberger.
Sorry, I.
Mr. Wilson.
I, thanks everyone.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
I.
Eyes eight, no zero.
The bills have received the legally required number of vote is finally passed. And that moves us on to other members, do you have anything you'd like to say before we go on?
Madam President?
Yes.
Thank you very much. As many of you are aware, the last five days has been rather rough for the Southside Flats and the Southside Slopes. Many of you have read the accounts of the shootings that took place and one man lost his life at the. At the hands of gun violence at a youth football practice. I want to assure the public at large throughout the city. That as trying a time is what these are and as difficult a situation as this is. We are not alone in this, that doesn't make it any easier. To understand or to try to wrap our brain around what is happening. But the deeper we delve into this with multiple. City and state agencies, the more we realize that cities like. Portland and Austin and Houston and Miami and Washington D C and New York. And on and on and on are beginning to see these upticks in gun violence, especially at nightlife districts. As people are returning post. The lifting of COVID regulations. I would be remiss in not acknowledging and thanking so many. Of the different state and local agencies that have come together collectively to try to find solutions. To what is happening, not just. Within East Carson Street, but within a larger arena throughout the city. And so State Senator Jay Costa, Chief of Staff Gilman. Our Public Safety Director Wendell Hisrich, our Chief of Police Scott Schubert. Public safety officials throughout the department. That we, I couldn't possibly list the number of people within public safety that have come. To assist and to help to find a solution and resolution to this. Chief Jones, Pendot, the Parking Authority, Ellison Hardin and the Office of Nighttime Economy. Barbara Rudyak, Southside Community Council, Listile, the Zone Three Public Safety Council, and on and on. We've heard this before, it takes a village to raise a child, it takes a village to to come together and solve these kinds of. Of problems that are that are plaguing us. There are announcements that will be coming through the Public Safety Department about changes that are coming to the East Carson Street Quarter. And I don't want to get ahead of them, I would like to have Public Safety make those those announcements. But some of the things that we have done so far is to bring in, for a number of weeks now. These very large and very, very bright light towers to light problematic areas that have been. Traditionally and historically problematic. I want to thank Director Hisrich for his consideration of that idea and making it happen to to see that those. Indeed come come to fruition. And also our Public Safety Director for the additional. Law enforcement officers that are on Carson Street at any given point in time now, thanks to his efforts. And Pendot and Public Safety for some announcements that will be coming this weekend for restructuring traffic. Along the East Carson Street Quarter as a way to add to the continuing safety of it. One of the things that we are seeing, and one of the things that we've worked so very hard over the years to correct. Is that this return to vehicles that we haven't seen. And large crowds of people unlike anything that we have ever seen in the history of East Carson Street. But with the onset of COVID and the. I don't want to say the demise, but the 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 restructuring of rideshare platforms like Lyft and Uber and. And others, we had worked very, very hard to encourage people to use rideshare platforms when they were coming. To the East Carson Street Quarter for a number of reasons. But with them not operating in capacities they have in the past. They, what we're seeing is this. Yeah, we need someone to mute someone, thank you, someone. And we're seeing this huge onslaught of vehicles. Unlike anything we've ever seen before, and many of you know. With a limited amount of parking along, not just East Carson, the South Side in general. What we're finding is these cars are flooding the residential areas. And so what that means is late at night, when establishments close and people go back to their cars. They're going deep back into the residential areas and causing disturbances that are very problematic to to our residents. So a number of different transportation strategies are in place to limit the number of vehicles. That are coming into the South Side and to correct some of the problems of congestion that are associated with those vehicles. And a number of other strategies that are coming and will be announced throughout the week from Public Safety Administration. But at this point in time, I really just wanted to thank everybody for their efforts. I want to thank members that were kind enough to reach out and offer their support during the last couple of days. And especially the community at large for. Their support, their reaching out, and of course, most definitely the consult. Our condolences to the family of the young man who lost his life at Corey Field this week. And Madam President, thank you for allowing me that time to to say that.
No, thank you very much for your comments, Councilman. Any other members?
Madam President.
And Coghill.
Yes, well said, Councilman Kraus, and I've also seen an uptick in some of my neighborhoods. And it's only too often we're faced with bad news here, so. On a lighter note, I just wanted to say, many of us are aware, and we've been talking about our swimming pool situation. And many of us are aware, Councilwoman Gross and Kelsmith, who went out and tried to find alternatives for city residents. And I was really disappointed to hear that some of the institutions and places that they come up empty-handed on. But that being said, their efforts did prompt a call from Dormont Borough to myself. I think they called me because Dormont is literally in my backyard. But Ben, who was the who's the Borough Manager called me and. Stressed his interest and want to, you know, help us out after hearing of our, you know, whether it's the lifeguards or not having the resources or. Broken poles. So I immediately jumped on it, I said, I called Councilwoman Gross and Kelsmith and told them of this, I said, we've got to meet with them. Of course, my district borders Dormont and it's in walking distance, so I was ecstatic about that specifically because. More pool is under construction in two of our larger neighborhoods in the city, Brookline and Beachview are without a pool. So it would provide access for them. You know, I just want to say to this, this is not your typical pool, this is an iconic, you know, they're celebrating one hundred years. I believe it's the largest in-ground pool in Pennsylvania and possibly one of the largest in the United States. They've got a great concession stand, beautiful picnic area, park right next door. So even though it's accessible for my district and they can walk there. It's also accessible outside of my district and they welcome all, and they've stressed this to us at that meeting. The T goes right to the Dormont Junction and it's about a five-minute walk down the hill and you can literally come from across the city. Don't expect people will use it on a regular basis from other parts of the city, but it is worth a trip. It's an experience, so you know, I would plan to spend all day there and treat it as that. There are some minor things that we're working out, we have kept Director Chapman in close contact and, you know. Looked him in on everything as well, it's just a matter of working out a few minor details, but we plan to have access to Dormont Pool. For our kids and more, as importantly, our adults, I'm surprised how many adults are asking me, where can I swim? And and that's, we hope to wrap that up by the end of the week, and we hope to have access to Dormont Pool in a simple voucher, or, you know, some things have to be worked out like that. By next week, so you know, time is running short as far as summer and swimming days go. But we are hoping to have, you know, open access to Dormont Pool free to kids. And five dollars for an adult, just like the city has, starting next week. I just want to express my thanks to Ben, Beth, who's our equivalent of, you know, Director Chapman. And also Danielle, who was on council, they had talked about this, they are already for it, I asked them, I said, what do you have to do on your part? And they're like, we just need you to, you know, make ends meet on our part, and I said, okay, well. So Director Chapman is working on that, we did attend a meeting, Councilwoman Gross and Kelsmith were there. And I'd like them to comment if they were, I think that's, it went very well, and I just want confirmation at least that I'm correct. And we look forward to, you know, announcing to our residents that they can use this iconic pool. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, Councilwoman Gross.
Sure, sure, so, you know, anyone can go to the Dormont Pool. So you don't have to be a resident of Dormont, you could go today and pay seven dollars per person. So it'll be seven dollars for an adult, seven dollars for every kid. What we're hoping the administration can manage. Is that we can match, we can pay for. Our constituents, our residents to go and pay just city residential rates. Now, you can't just go to the door and pay, so what we what we're hoping Parks and Rec can work out is a voucher. And then Dormont would be billing the city of Pittsburgh and we would be paying, for example, all those children, hopefully our children to be attending the Dormont Pool for free. So those are the kinds of logistics that we're hoping Director Chapman can work out here. We contacted Office of Management and Budget last week, they seemed to think that it was something that they could do under their current. Budget and 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 kind of spending policies without an action of council. But we may have to revisit it when we come back from our recess. So we're hoping they're able to do it and just do it as an invoice so that they can figure out a way. But council members should also look out for communications from the administration if this gets figured out. For a way to get those, how city residents can get these vouchers. To get the discount at Dormont Pool. So that's that's the part that we're hoping the administration is able to pull off. But it is open, it is beautiful, it can hold something like two thousand people, it's amazingly big. And if you have small children, it is a wonderful place on the far end from the entrance. Is one of those kind of just gradual beach entrances, right? And so if you have little little children, sometimes some of our city pools on the shallow end is two or three feet, and that's. Above the head of a small child, if you've got one. It's going to be a little stressful to have your your kid in the big pools if there's no baby pools. So I'll confess that years ago when my teenager was small. Dormont Pool usually opens, at that time opened a few weeks before the city pools. So I really enjoyed going and taking her out there to to get some pool weather when we had hot days, and so I can highly recommend it. As a destination for people with small children, for sure. But hopefully we'll, you know, our conversations last week will result in an actual plan. So that we can communicate with our residents to get some actual kind of paper vouchers that they can use. To access the Dormont Pool at the same price discounts that they have at the city pools. Thank you, Mr. Coghill, for making the connections, really great, it's a really great conversation, and also thank you to Ben and Beth. And Danielle, they were just really eager to to try to work this out and really appreciate their efforts.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any other members?
Madam President.
Yes, Councilman Burgess.
Two things, first of all, I want to commend you. For your willingness to, and I know you'll talk more about this, but your willingness to schedule. Community meetings. So that we can engage and have a conversation with various stakeholders. I am always interested in listening to any. Individual or group who has a perspective. And I've done so now. And not been as clear as perhaps I can be, so I do want to suggest to you, though. In my, having now been a leader in the community for thirty-seven years, at least in Homewood. And being a member of council for fourteen years. I wanted to at least start to. I wanted to at least start to talk about, there are lots of people who say they have the best interest of the Black community at heart. Many of them actually do not. And I will no longer allow them to pretend that they do, when in actuality, they don't. And so the reason, let me give you a first example. The reason that the, for years historically, the Black Church has been considered a legitimate leader in the Black community because it has three things that are unique to it, or at least, I'm sorry, but consistent. Number one, it is made up primarily of African-Americans, the Black Church. Second of all, it has African-American leadership. Its board and normally its pastors are African-American. And third of all, its money is generated primarily from African-Americans. So it has African-American members, African-American leadership, and survives solely because of the contributions of African-American people. It is in many ways the ideal example of a legitimate African-American voice. For the, many of them are actually residents too, and so it advocates for the Black community and we recognize it. But we now have the rise of these other voices who utilize advocacy for the African-American community, theoretically, but that's not their agenda. And there are like three groups, I think, and I'm now going to be very clear about it. One, there are these institutional voices whose pursuit is absolutely not the African-American community, but they use it when it suits their purposes, right? An example of that, for instance, is the corporate, some of the corporate people, like the Post Gazette. The Post Gazette's best interest is not necessarily the African-American community. Last, in the last election, they endorsed Donald Trump. No organization, none, that has the Black interest, the best interest of Black people, could endorse an explicit white supremacist, homophobic, anti-women leader. And so, but occasionally, you know, they will say things for the, you know, theoretically for the benefit of the Black community, but they are not consistent in its support. Second of all, you have these special interest groups. Many of them are community-based, but again, they don't have African-American leadership. That is, their board is not African-American, their executive director is not African-American, and their funding is not African-American. They are funded by outside organizations that have a completely different agenda. And they come in and organize Black community and say they speak for the Black community. They don't live there, their leadership is not African-American, their money is not African-American. But they really have, they use the African-American community to organize them for their own purposes. And I will now begin to speak out against that sort of paternalistic view of the Black community. The Black community has authentic leadership and authentic voices and can speak on its own. And then lastly, we have these community fanatics. These fake community voices with their fantasy policies and their fictionalized practices. They also do not represent the community, they are unelected. And their real interest is not the Black community. Their real interest is to provide resources for themselves and for the narrow group of people who are in their camp. And so in my mind, being for the Black community means to rebuild African-American communities. It means rebuilding housing, it means supporting Black businesses. It's helping families every day, not just when it's convenient. And to do the work 24/7, seven days a week, and sometimes in solid. The best, as I think the President can attest to, in our communities, some of the most significant workers are quiet. They never come to a council meeting, you never hear their voice. But they're giving food to children every day, they're doing after-school programming every day. They're picking up kids when they're lost at 12 o'clock at night and don't have rides every day. Those are the real leaders of Black communities in all communities. And so these other loud voices that demand attention, I will now directly, I'll listen and I'll be reasonable. But you no longer get to pimp off the Black community because you have a platform for media when you are not representative of the Black community. And now for moving forward, I will begin to expose that sort of paternalistic, anti, really anti-community fervor. And if we want to have real conversations, let's have, be honest about real conversations about what it really takes, you know, to be supportive and to encourage Black people, Black families, Black businesses in this city. And so with that, I'll stop talking.
Thank you, Reverend Burgess. Any other members? Seeing no other members, I'm going to just make a few comments. When Reverend, I'm thankful that you and Councilwoman Val and all the council members are willing to work through our break to hear from residents, to try to get people to come out and speak and listen to what they have to say. But before we ever pass this, the American Rescue Plan funding, which I'm grateful that we did because there was so much need and we're still trying to figure out how to get this money quickly out to people for some things. You were in the meeting where I said, you know, I wanted to make sure that we did something for the athletic associations and for the nonprofits that helped get us through COVID. There were a lot of people that did a lot of work. I'm not saying those people are coming down here, but I saw what a lot of people did in the community. And like you mentioned, a lot of them, we may not see here at council ever. But I've watched a lot of people, and I did work in your district, and I do know there's a lot of great people doing amazing things, feeding kids, doing after-school programs across the city. But I saw a lot in your district. But I became friends with a lot of people from your district, so I do know a lot about it. But I really wanted to make sure that people that do that kind of work, that got us through COVID, because there was a lot of people who got us through COVID, that we may not have made it as a city as well as we did had it not been for some of these people out there feeding people, helping people, cutting grass for people, you know, doing errands and all sorts of things I saw people do to help get through COVID employment, helping people with their checks, and just everything. And housing, I mean, there was a group in Deb Gross's, Councilwoman Gross's District Action Housing, I referred to a gazillion people to, and they were very helpful at the time. So I want to see those people rewarded for getting us through a very difficult time and saying, this is what this money was for. You got us through a difficult time, we saw what you did and we appreciate it as a council and as a city, and we want to say thank you for getting us through. We wish you we had this type of money to help you with all the time to help our people. But that is the job and the function of the county, to make sure that some of these services are provided. So, but while we have this money, I want to make sure that we come up with. But I did say, I didn't want to just come up with a grant to just give to people and just everybody just comes in and gets it for free for all. I think there should be some criteria. I think we should have some proof of the work that was done during COVID or some proof of what you will do, audits done on the group or their submitted audit with their application. There just needs to be some criteria, I don't know what all it should be. But I think we all know the groups that worked really hard in our districts. A lot of us worked alongside them and did things with them. So I want to make sure that we're working together. And I am grateful that we got the athletic associations their funds. But I'm really going to be adamant that we get something for the nonprofits to help the City of Pittsburgh get through here. Who, I don't know who will collect that money. I don't know who all members will agree deserve that money. But I do know that there are a lot of people that do deserve it and that's what this money was intended for, to help for those who helped us get through COVID. Should be definitely on the forefront of getting some of this money. So I'm not going to stop until we have something in place for them. But I do think that absolutely, I'm going to be stickler like you, Reverend, for the criteria that we set for. And with that said, I want to talk a little bit about the polls and us working with Dormont Pool. And I did talk to Director Paulson, he said, I don't know if you had a chance, Councilwoman Gross or Councilman Cog Hill, but he said, please call him directly, he will help us through this. He thinks it's a simple process, especially since it's under 10,000 or 10,000 or under. And I think that what I liked about Dormont is I border the most boroughs, our district. And we have a lot of polls in our area that say no city, it will say residents from these neighborhoods allowed. But it would definitely leave out the City of Pittsburgh. And so when I talk about us putting in something to give our residents a discount for paying for parks, it comes from this place where I've seen signs up that said, no city residents allowed outside of our district in their parks. And so I want our residents to be able to have that discount. But I also want to commend Dormont Pool because they not only reached out to Councilwoman Cog Hill and he thankfully scheduled the meeting with Councilwoman Gross and I, but they said that they, they charge, they used to charge one price for their residents and one price for outside residents, for non-residents. And they decided to away with that. This year, they charge our city residents the same as they charge their residents. They said they want our residents here, they want to be inclusive, anything they can do to help, they want to help. And I just was really impressed with their openness and willingness to work with us because I've had some of the contrary on our side. It's not always been, it's been nice with some of our boroughs, but it's not always the most pleasant interactions with some of them. So I want to thank them for being great neighbors to both my district and Councilman Cog Hill's district. Because they're right at the end of Banksville Road. And with that said, I do want to acknowledge that even though Councilwoman Gross and I are still working on trying to figure out what we can do with the polls, I do want to acknowledge that the Pittsburgh Foundation stepped up to the plate immediately and they were very strong and willing to help us in any way they could if we had some idea of what they could have done. And the University of Pittsburgh and Jimmy Williams already has a program where our kids swim free in the summer and they have it also in the fall. And he sent us information so that our kids can register for the fall because the summer program's already filled. But they will have another program in the fall. So there were some things that we can share and some things that we were able to do. And with that said, I just want to thank everybody, have a great break. This was one of the most difficult years on council for so many reasons. But having these meetings this way has been such a challenge. And I really don't know, I know Ashley in the clerk's office and does an amazing job giving me these cheat sheets every week. And if you ever see me, sometimes I'm like, my sheet doesn't say it. Well, I'm trying to chair the meeting from my phone while on the phone. So I want to thank her for getting those sheets together. But I want to thank Madame Clerk and Kim for all the, and everyone in the clerk's office. I mean, every one of them have been amazing. Louise, the Mike. I know I'm forgetting somebody, but everybody. Madame Clerk, can you acknowledge your department? Because I do want to say, could you mention their names?
Yeah, we have Louise, of course, Mike and Chris and Kim and Denise and Kate. It's been awesome on our time off. So everybody has been working diligently and hard and make sure we, we make sure that everything is done on a weekly basis. So thank you for it, thank you for the support.
No, thank you. Yes, yeah, definitely, everybody, they've just been amazing. And I just want to thank them because without the clerk's office, we would not have gotten these meetings through, without our IMP department definitely teaching us all the technology and all the things we needed, our budget office helping us through the budget process, our Sergeant Arms making sure he's held down, that they made sure they held down our floor, even though we were not there, you know, as members all the time. There were still people coming in and out and they made sure that they took care of that area. I want to thank the members and the public for their patience. But I want to thank the members for all your support and help through this because this has been really difficult, I can't wait till we get back in person. So hopefully, there's not, if we have another outbreak with the variants, the two variants, I hope that we're able still to come in person and just maybe wear a mask, if that's what we have to do. But we do plan on coming back September, in September, to in-person meetings. And we'll work through that and we'll start making some announcements to the public with Madame Clerk, we'll work on some announcements. But I want to clarify everything with members first on their comfort level and where we are. So I'll send some emails if you have any suggestions. In the meantime, please let us know, I'd like to get a meeting notice out by next week. So thank you, everyone. Can we, anything else from members? If not, can we have a motion to excuse the absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting?
I move.
In a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Louise adjourned, have a good break, everyone.